It's 7:00 PM. I'd like to call the February 26, 2019 College Place City Council议 Order. Mr. Peterson, would you please lead our debate?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a prayer?
Yes, if Ms. Viha Hagan would like to do our invitation.
Dear heavenly Father, we're thankful that we can come on this cold evening to do our city buil- business. We're so thankful for our staff, and we ask that you would help us to make the right decisions. In Jesus' name, we thank you. Amen.
Amen. It's now our public comment period. Anybody wishing to address the College Place City Council on anything that is not on the agenda? If they please step forward. I guess we don't have the podium.
Oh, I see.
Ah, there it is. Never mind. Step to the podium. It's taking too many addresses. Seeing no one before you is a consent agenda approving this evening's agenda, the council minutes from February 12, 2019, and the council planning commission joint workshop from February 19, 2019. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
It's been moved by Ms. Sherman. There's a second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Cleveland. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. There is a public hearing this evening. Mr. Ricard.
Good evening. This is the pre-maintenance annexation. It's been for you once before where you determined to accept the annexation as proposed and establish the zoning of single-family residential and also the city indebtedness. It's 4.97 acres. It's just off of 8th Street. It's a county island. It'll, once this is annexed, it'll eliminate any islands in that area finally. The applicants have applied for annexation because they wish to further subdivide the property into, I think, probably somewhere around 10 to 12 lots. They're proposing that the homes be single-family homes, and the existing house is on a septic system. They will be abandoning that and connecting to city sewer. It's already on city water as part of the development application because they won't have sufficient area to have an onsite septic system after the development. We notified surrounding property owners within 300 feet on February 12th, posted the site, and also at City Hall and Fire Department and Police Department. We have not received any comments on the annexation, so that's, those are the basics of it. Any questions?
Questions for Mr. Ricard. Seeing none, I'd like to open the public hearing on the pre-maintenance annexation. Anybody wishing to testify to the College Place City Council, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and address. For a second time, anybody wishing to testify for or against the pre-maintenance annexation, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and address. And one final time, anybody wishing to testify to the College Place City Council on the pre-maintenance annexation, please step forward, state your name and address. Seeing no one, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move.
Been moved by Ms. Viha Hagan. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Been seconded by Mr. Cleveland. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of closing the public hearing, please state aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Ricard. But you don't get to sit down yet. Action items. Pre-maintenance annexation.
Need I say more? Asking that you approve the ordinance.
Do it again.
Yeah, I was listening before.
Yeah. Start over. Do you have anything new to report?
No, nothing new.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 19-007 annexing certain property located at 620 Southeast 8th Street and establishing the zoning and assumption of indebtedness.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Sherman, seconded by Mr. Bobbin. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Ricard.
Thank you.
Chief DeMaris, approval to receive Department of Justice criminal history grant for electronic latent prints.
Again, this is a live scan is what it's referred to, and it's a grant through the Washington State Patrol and the Department of Justice. And what it does, it allows us to replace the paper-ink fingerprint system with a live scan, which is a computer system. So it'll be like, kind of like a paper scanner, and you put the fingerprints in the palm of the hand on that, and it scans it into the system electronically. You get a better product, it's cleaner, and it's more efficient. It is a grant for $2,000 or $11,298. We have a 10% matching obligation, and this would be a great improvement to our police operations and the service of our community.
Questions for Chief DeMaris. Ms. Selby?
Where would the 10% match come from?
I do not know where that, it's...
Well, we will have funds within the budget. I have my funds.
Okay.
We put in for it before we put the budget together, so we planned for it.
Questions? Is there a motion?
All motion. All motion to accept the grant and authorize expenditure of 10% matching funds.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Cleveland, seconded by Ms. Selby. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Gordon, financial guarantees.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an item that has come before council several times in the past, so I won't belabor the point. What we're looking at tonight is a follow-up to our administrative report at the last council meeting, where we basically were asking whether council is interested in us pursuing what we called the PASCO option for financial guarantees for projects when they come to final plat, whether or not, instead of completing the improvements, whether they can financially guarantee them so they can sell the lots and so forth. So what we've done is put together an ordinance that has encapsulated the PASCO option, as we called it, and I'll go through that again in a minute. Can I grab the...
Here we go.
And could, Lisa, could you put up the final draft of the ordinance, not the red line one? Okay, thanks. And so what we've done is, we had some existing financial guarantee language in the code today. It was nested under the long plat section, subdivision section of the code, and so what we've done is, we pulled that out, and we placed it in its very own area in a new section, 1910, where we've also included the new language for the PASCO options. That's all in one place now. And so we've done a number of changes in the code to reference that instead of the old section, and so I'm going to walk through kind of what we've done so you understand. The first section here...
Is there any way to blow that up so this is not a real life test?
I'm flunking. Oh, I'm doing great.
Speak for yourself.
Is that better?
Yes.
Whoops. So, I might have been... So this section right here, the section one, we've added, because in the past we did not have an explicit reference for building projects as opposed to subdivision projects, where we could actually go out, and if the developer couldn't get all the way through it or wanted to jump ahead and get a permit, could he financially guarantee it? This allows him to do that now, instead of just limiting it to subdivision. So we've added some language so that on commercial projects and the like, we can do that. If you want to go to section two, similarly, we have put a general statement in the subdivision section, because before, this code was only under the long plat subdivision section. Now it applies to both long and short plats. Okay, so we added that portion. We're just trying to make it so we can generally apply financial guarantees to any project that comes to the city. It's an option for our developers. Okay, it makes it a little more flexible for them. Section three was a previous, all we did was change this language here and then add this sentence down here below. All we're doing is referencing, again, the new location for the financial guarantee code, which we'll get into, but I just want to kind of show you the new sections and the amended sections that we've added to help reference it. Okay, section four, again, this is a, just a new reference. Let's see, make sure I don't put it backwards. To clarify, that financial protection is now in chapter 1910, before it was a reference to an old area. So again, we're just referencing the new section. Then we go to section five. This is where, whoops, I did it again. I'm sorry. Section five, I'm sure glad you're down there. So section five is the main section that it used, the financial protection language used to live under. We've moved it out of that now, and now all that section says is basically that that financial protection is available for final plats, and if you want to go and find out what it's all about, go to chapter 1910, which is the new section for that code. So let's go ahead and get into that. This is the new chapter. And what we've done is, we've put together a, we've placed this directly after the review and approval process in the development, consolidated development code. So as you go through the consolidated development code, it goes through projects and so forth, of review and approval, and this follows that. So it's kind of a logical location for it. And then we get into the first constraint in the PASCO option. Now, if you recall, the PASCO option does not allow any, does not, let's see, they have to complete and get, they have to complete all improvements before we will allow occupancy permits. Okay, that's the change that we would be making. There's another change, which I'll allude to here, and it actually is right here in this first section. In talking with PASCO, we were concerned that, for example, if you had steep slopes, and let's say it was on somebody's back of somebody's property, we issued final plat, then how do they get in there, right, and work on somebody else's property if it's already been sold, which is a potential, a possibility? They clarified, what they do is, they actually do not allow a financial guarantee to take place until some of the critical elements of that development are completed, like steep slopes, something that could fail, like floodplains, or a significant stormwater issue. They make sure that the developer addresses that, those parts, before they'll even allow a financial guarantee. So we've incorporated that here, and you can read the language. Permanent slope retention improvements, like cut, fill, retaining walls, et cetera, and permanent measures and improvements necessary to mitigate floodplain, stormwater, and groundwater concerns. So that's the first constraint under the PASCO option. If we can go down to the next page. Okay, one of the other things that needs to happen before we will issue, allow a financial guarantee to be accepted, is we require that landowner under this code to sign an agreement with the city. And we got several different elements here. Excuse me. We, whoops, sorry again, Lisa. The first thing we do is, we want to explicitly make sure they know that they cannot, they will not get occupancy permits until all their improvements are done. We want it to be clear. We want them to have signed that agreement to make sure they understand that. We also make sure that under their purchase and sales agreements, have language in there, notifying their buyers that in fact, they will not be getting an occupancy permit until all of the improvements are done. So again, it's a clear notice, they're required to give this to their, put this in their sales, purchase and sales agreements. It also, those purchase and sales agreements have to include a blanket easement for construction, so that even if those properties are sold in advance, that developer can still get in and say, do a mitigation on a slope that's failing, or some other part of a project that in fact includes more than just the property of common property in the subdivision. Okay, so we have that as well. And then we also have down here, Councilman, Councilmember Selby had mentioned that she was concerned that staff is going to take the brunt of a lot of the pressures we get up to that final occupancy, or that final part of the project, where everybody wants their occupancy permits, and it's not all done. So what we've done is a, an attempt to address that. There may be better ways, but for now, what we've done is, we're suggesting that we will be reimbursed for all costs related to addressing buyer concerns over incomplete and unapproved infrastructure. So if we're getting tons of calls, we start to log them, and we charge for the time. If it requires a lot of going out and handholding on site, we log our time, and we charge back to the developer, and they have to agree to that process if in fact they're going to get a financial guarantee. Okay? So that's, that is our attempt to address that. If there are better ways, maybe that's something we can think about in the future, but for now, that's what we have. And then finally, as a part of this agreement, they agree to warrant all their improvements for two years. Okay? So that's, that's that first part. Before they can actually financially guarantee a project, they have to get these parts done. And then the second part of the PASCO option is basically the statement that they will not get any occupancy permits. It's already noted in that agreement. They won't get any occupancy permits until all the improvements are finished, complete. And so you'll see that stated, if you want to go up a little bit, Lisa, right here. Okay? So the other part of this is that before they get their occupancy permits, if say during the final plat process, we have recommended to the hearings examiner, and you have approved the requirement for a maintenance bond as opposed to a performance bond, the difference being a performance bond guarantees they build it, a maintenance bond is after it's complete, is making sure it lasts. Okay, it's, it's a strong warranty. In other words, if the slopes start to fail, we have a maintenance bond on it, we can pull from that to fix them. Okay? Or if there's a stormwater facility where the plantings did not grow, if they don't fix it, we can pull from the maintenance bond. Does that make sense? Okay. So that would also have to be in place. The other part of this, if you want to go up to the next page, thanks. The other part of this is, we talked about the concern that we're getting constant requests for partial releases, which consumes a tremendous amount of staff time. So how do we address that? So what we suggested we do is, if they go all the way through the process and make a final call for final plat, or a release of their financial guarantee, and everything checks out and it's good, no cost. That's just part of the process. But if they ask for a partial release halfway through, and we go out and have to go out a second time, or first time in addition to the final time, we're going to charge them 3% of whatever elements it was that they are asking to be released every time. And if one of them fails and it comes back up again, we'll charge them again for that. So it's 3% of that total amount. What that does is, it puts a brake on the constant request for financial releases, okay? And it encourages them to get their act together, get it done the first time, and be done with it. Okay? Otherwise, there's a cost to pay. Right now, there is no cost to pay. The city goes out, city goes out, city goes out. Okay, is that clear? Okay. That's effectively, pretty much, the bulk of everything that we were asking for. There is an improvement warranty required for two years. We were thinking about requiring what we were calling a maintenance bond, and some cities require a maintenance bond on a regular basis. PASCO doesn't have it written into their code, but in talking to their folks there, they require a one-year maintenance bond on everything. LaLala has the option of requiring it for landscaping for a year. So various cities treat it different ways. All we're saying is, we have the option to apply that. If staff comes to council and requests it because we think there's a need, then we could apply that bond. Typically, I would assume that would occur at the hearing examiner during preliminary plat, where we would require that as a condition. Okay. I think enough said. The last section there is the old section that we brought over from the subdivision, long subdivision section. This right here, the financial protection options, and one of them is a performance bond. These are just the different forms of financial protection. Financial institution financing, and then I think the third one, third one is financial, is personal, if you want. Thanks, Lisa. Go up a little bit more. Yeah, a little bit more. Here we go. And then we have personal fund financing, and this is just all inherited language, really didn't make any changes to it, just brought it back in. So also, this is really what we're calling the PASCO option. We would ask you to consider a recommendation to go ahead and adopt this code, but if you have concerns, obviously, we want to hear and make sure we address those.
Cleveland?
You, there's a lot I don't understand about the whole process, so forgive me here, but you mentioned the 3% that they'd have to pay if you came out and did an inspection of some infrastructure that they installed. Could you maybe give me an example of what would be inspected in that, and what would be the, the potential cost of that 3% that they would be paying if things didn't measure up?
No, that's a good question. For example, let's say the developer comes to us and say, hey, I've got, I financially guaranteed everything, right? But I'm finished with the water and finished with the sewer. Can I release those parts of the bond so that the bonding company doesn't charge me to continually guarantee those sections? We say, sure, we'll go out. Let's add up the cost, give me a stamped estimate of how much those are. I don't know, let's say it's a couple hundred thousand dollars. We go out and we look. So whatever 3% times 200,000, if you want to do the math, would be our fee, okay, for administrative staff time. And then we would look at it, and if it was completed and done to specs, we're done. We release it, we write them a letter, the bonding company, they no longer have to bond for that, it's effectively accepted by the city. If it doesn't pass, let's say just the water, and let's say it's half of that, 100,000, that 100,000 would remain out there as something that needs to be financially guaranteed. So they would not release the big amount, because they've got this, this amount they've paid for this financial guarantee, they wouldn't be able to pull out that 100,000, and we wouldn't write a letter to that effect until it passed. So if they had, so the next time they come up, they might ask for water again, and if the next time it passes, then it falls off the list, and they wouldn't be charged that 3% every time we go out.
Again, there's many things I don't know here, but I wonder if it would be, at least starting out, maybe kind of us, to give them a one-strike. Like, all right, for the first time, you do this, because, because that could be, you know, multiple thousands of dollars that they'd be having to pay, and, you know, if, if they're just getting used to this, or, you know, a lot of contractors and developers might just miss this language, be like, oh, what? I didn't realize I signed that kind of thing. So I'm wondering if maybe a one-strike, where you come out, we investigate, we look at it, and we're like, well, these things need to be fixed. And that way, they have the chance to, all right, okay, we didn't realize that, we missed that, thank you very much. And then we do a second inspection, and if that one fails, after we've told them what needs to be fixed, then they'd be like, boom, all right, well, we told you guys how to do this. And this is kind of a thought that pops into my head here.
Would you do that for every single partial release?
I don't know what would be necessarily reasonable, but it's a thought that comes to mind here, is if they're going to be potentially charged multiple thousands of dollars to do these things, would that be a reasonable thing to do, is give them essentially one-strike? I mean, you know it best, basically, so just, do you have any thoughts on that? Or do you feel like it would be better just 3%, no strikes?
Based on my experience, I think there might be many strikes, and it'd be hard to draw that line. That's, that's kind of my take. We have to understand, I think the other part of it is, realize that this, this, this costs us money in terms of time and effort as a staff, and also that financial guarantees are not a, are not an obligation of the city. They're a kind of a privilege. It's one we would want to extend to encourage them. We could certainly put in some kind of a first-strike, maybe a complimentary review, but again, it becomes difficult at each juncture.
Ms. Selby, and then Ms. Collo.
Well, I was wondering, I understand that the idea is to be somewhat punitive to stop this from happening, but perhaps, it still seems like they should at least pay for the employee's time. And so if we had some language that we could charge them the employee's time or up to 3%, that would give you room to be flexible. But I don't know how complicated that would be. Because for an honest mistake, I hate to have someone have to pay 3%, but when somebody's just trying to game the system, and it usually doesn't take you very many trips to figure that out.
So in other words, so in other words, what you're suggesting is that what we would do is just charge it for them time?
But with an option to, on the city's part, to charge up to 3% for repeated, or, you know, some language like that.
Okay? Okay?
Ms. Collo?
This isn't so much legal advice, but I assume that, and I'm not sure if this is what the procedure would be, but if they request a release of X amount, then the response would be, you're requesting this, here's how much money we're going to ask, here's the, here's what we could potentially charge you for if it's not complete. Are you sure?
Right.
He wants to come out and, and look at this right now?
Right.
Maybe, yeah.
Certainly, that would be appropriate, yeah.
That would be part of the process.
Mr. Peterson?
A couple of thoughts. I think the one-strike is what's happening now, and I think we're trying to get away from the one-strike. I'm sure you're, you're trying to get away from every little component going out and visiting them over and over again. So I, yeah, I think this needs to be communicated. I, my personal opinion, this needs to be communicated very clearly, this is what's going to happen. Once again, communication back, this has a potential of a $3,000 impact, a $30 impact, or whatever. As far as compensation for employee time, I can see that involving the staff time, who went, how much they make, are we going to include in an allotment for employee benefits? Turns into an accounting cycle to try to figure out what you're going to charge, unless you went with an average of the department, and then, how much time did they spend, et cetera, et cetera. That gets a little long, a little into the weeds, as far as I'm concerned, so.
Ms. Sherman?
My understanding, too, would be that they're, they're building to a plan that was approved, and so that's kind, I mean, that's not the city saying this isn't complete. Like, their job is to build, to plan. So there would be no reason in my mind for them to call you out if it wasn't done. So I like what Ria is suggesting, that if that's clear, what it would be, that makes more sense. But I guess I'm thinking if there's this one-strike rule, is that per contractor, per project? You know, how do we write that? So I kind of like this as-is.
Okay. No, I, I think it's, I understand the concern, I'm sorry, American...
Mr. Peterson?
Just one quick question. Has this been vetted by, what are the responses, what have they been if contractors have looked at this, or if this has been vetted by any contractors? Are you...
No, we have not vetted it with contractors. And primarily, the reason for that is, there is a strong, strong vested interest in continuing a process where we end up getting, we end up doing all the punch lists for them, and almost start doing the project management. So it's like, we're ready, and they're not, and we go out, and...
No, I'm sorry, I missed, I think I miscommunicated. This new approach, has this been vetted within the entire process?
With our contractors, or with...
With contractors?
No.
Okay, the whole, okay, the PASCO option, I'll call it, okay. Okay.
No, we're, we're living on the basis of PASCO's experience on here.
Right, so other cities have this type of thing that other contractors would have seen before, potentially.
They do not have the 3% as far as I'm aware. That would be something we've got.
Other, Mr. Cleveland?
Just after hearing Ria's suggestion, is I, you know, feel that would be, just, just as long as they're going with this, both eyes open, I know it's easy to miss stuff. So clearly, telling them that, like, you could be charged up to 3%, like, just being very clear about that, you know, I think that would probably do away with the need for anything like this right now.
Okay.
Other questions? Mr. Cleveland?
One other comment here is, you know, as far as the homeowners, you know, starting to pressure us, do we have a section of our website that we could just point them to and be like, hey, you know, look at this information here, if you have any questions further, let us know?
We don't now, but we can, and that's a great idea, I guess.
Mr. Ms. Collo?
I would add that Carolyn has been starting a graph webpage, just for residential permits and putting names like that up, so that can be handled.
Great. Ms. Selby?
I would be prepared to make a motion. I move to adopt ordinance number 19-008, implementing revised requirements regarding the financial guarantee and protection of improvements related to subdivisions, developments, projects, or phases.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Ms. Selby. Seconded by Ms. Sherman. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Gordon.
Thank you.
Mr. Ricard, rescheduling the 2019 annual comprehensive plan update process.
So at the workshop last week, we talked about this. Where we're at with, we adopted our comprehensive plan in October of 2018. Annually, we generally, our code says that we open up for, for an annual amendment cycle to make land use... cycle to make land use changes, or, or changes to the comp plan text. Since we're still not through the urban growth boundary application process with the county, and we're in the process of going through our development regulations and zoning code, staff feels that it would be appropriate to postpone any amendments to the comprehensive plan until 2020. So we would advertise for that in January or February of, of next year. So this is a resolution that would allow us to postpone the annual 2019 process.
Questions for Mr. Ricard? Mr. Peterson?
Make a motion to approve resolution number 19-0010 regarding rescheduling the 2019 comprehensive plan annual update process.
It's been moved by Mr. Peterson, seconded by Ms. Nyhing. Any further discussion? Seen none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say a sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Ricard. Mr. Isatello, appointment of Ponte and Wernet, P.S., as conflict public defender for the City of College Place, Washington.
Thank you, Mayor. So District Court essentially does our municipal court services, our public defender is Rachel Cortez, and she does a great job. However, there are times where there's conflicts that arise, and she, whether it be schedule, or, or whoever's being brought to court, and she can't act as the public defender. So how it's going right now is when there's a conflict, public defender, essentially a judge just appoints whoever's available, and because of that, the bills for that have gone all over the place. There's been some quite high ones, some low, mainly on the high side. So in this case, it's trying to get some predictability, so we know who we're dealing with and what the rate is. So we issued a request for proposals, and we received one from the firm of Ponte and Wernet. A termy, a Cobra Plucker, put together, and it was basically $350 per case, and then 150 per hour if it goes to essentially a full-on court case. That's right in the middle essentially of what we've been paying in the case of the conflict public defender. This would be for a three-year term with renewals, but it's a way to establish some predictability, because right now, it's all over the place.
Questions for Mr. Isatello? Ms. Sherman?
It's assigned to their office, not necessarily Cobra, but which he's.
Yeah, yeah.
Other questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution. Is there a number? Yeah, 19-011, which appoints the firm Ponte and Wernet, P.S., as conflict public defenders for the City of College Place for a three-year term with options for renewals beginning April 1st, 2018.
Second. It's been moved by Ms. Sherman, seconded by Ms. Selby. Any further discussion? Seen none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say a sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Isatello. Chief Demaris, Department of Ecology, solid waste enforcement grant.
Okay, so what this is, our new special enforcement officer, Ron Nordman, was doing some cross-training with Walawala PD, who have been a great partner, and they're code enforcement officers, and he discovered this grant. And what this grant is through, really, it's through Department of Ecology Solid Waste Enforcement Arm of Department Ecology. And basically, it's an MOU, so we would operate as sort of an agent for Department Ecology, doing the same thing we're already doing, which is code enforcement, in that they would actually provide us funds and benefits and up to 25% overhead associated with labors and hours associated with the types of investigations with solid waste enforcement. So it's a way for us to partner with Walawala County Department of Community Health and Public Health Agency, and the State Department of Ecology, to use funds to do what we're already doing within the city limits.
Questions for Chief Demaris?
There was so much information in here, so we don't.
Yes, he does a great job. Ms. Selby?
I would move that we approve the solid waste enforcement grant MOU.
It's been moved by Ms. Selby. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, I think Mr. Bobbitt was first.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Seen none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, say a sign. Motion passes unanimously. Administrative reports, Chief Winter, fire hydrant code.
Good evening. Before you, you have a fire hydrant code that we call a, a housekeeping code. The city administrator found this code adopted by another municipality, and in talking with him, what we're trying to do is make life easier for people who want to build in our community. The fire hydrant code is taken out of the International Fire Code, which has been adopted by the state of Washington. So this has already been adopted by the state, and has already been adopted by us because we adopt the International Fire Code. But this gives us a way to, to put it into easier language, to put it on our website so that a developer or somebody who wants to build a home can say, hey, here's a spot I can find exactly what is required of me if I want to build in this area. Do I need a fire hydrant? Is the spacing correct? Do I have adequate flow? All those types of things. So it isn't a change of how we do things, it isn't a change of policy or anything like that. It just gives another way for our community to find information. And if you have any questions, Mike would be happy to answer those. Well delegated, Chief.
Any questions? Mr. Isatello?
The one thing I will add as well, is that when listening, easily to find a location, we did have coal facts, and when they do the fire ravens for fire agencies, we actually gained some points out of it by doing that. Where in the case of coal facts, it went from a raven from a six to a five, and that was one of the many things, but that is a way of doing that.
What are we?
We're currently at four.
That's what I thought.
Smaller the number, the better.
Okay, I'm like, is this golf scoring or football?
One is unheard of, 10 is you don't want. Thank you for your time.
And finally, the district report, you're, you're, unfortunately, have to suffer through the, the, as, as you, as you may remember, we did in 2017, the community survey looking at community wants and needs. One of the, one of the things that rose to the top was a library. We've gone through a lot of discussion, looking at how best to do that. The Walawala County Rural Library District probably is our best option for a variety of, for a variety of reasons in the long run, and they have the intention of building a library in the city. The process that we have to go through is we have to pass an, we have to pass an ordinance requesting to be annexed into the library district. The trustees of the library district have to pass likewise ordinance, being willing to annex the city in. Those two ordinances then go to the county commissioners, who will schedule an election sometime in the fall, could be, could be as part of the, as if there's a, if there's a runoff election in the summer for, for the number of candidates, it could be that, or in September, or the general election in November. We haven't discussed the date yet. I've talked with both the executive director and the library, the library board of trustees, and they're, I think they're excited about the process of annexation. Then we'll then go to a vote of the people, the folks vote that in, then they'll be part of the rural library district. Right now, the current, the current levy for the library district is about 47 cents per thousand. The levy's actually set by the county commissioners. I'm not sure where that will go. Assuming this all goes as planned, we'll have to go a memorandum, understanding how the process goes, and who shares the cost of elections, and what the interim, where our interim facility would be, should, should people elect to be part of that, and that annexation would take place on the 1st of January 2020.
Thank you. I, I just got another question this week of whatever happened with the library stuff, so. And I encouraged the person to come and speak, but they didn't, so.
Well, you know, we, we don't, we know the demand is there, the only question is, are people willing to pay for it?
Yeah. Well, let them tell us directly.
And that's, then, you know, we, we, it was an expressed, we know it was an expressed desire. We also know that not, not nearly as many people were willing to pay for it as they were to, to want one, and so the only way to, the only way to resolve this is go to a vote. We actually have money set aside in the budget for that, so we'll, we'll kind of work through the process. Ms. Selby?
One quick question. Does it have to be a supermajority or just a majority?
50%, 50, you know, above 50%, which is one of the reasons why we, why we chose the rural library district. Any of the other options would retard our supermajority. I, you know, I feel lucky, but not that lucky.
And, and for the record, I've accepted that this is the best option.
So, so I know, I know that trustees were pretty excited about that, I want to chat with them, so. And they, we have a good, we have a good opportunity here, and perhaps, an opportunity for, for a community space that we're determined to have in the near-term future, so. So we'll bring that to you on the 12th of March. And I, I'm, it, it actually may go before the library trustees before then, so we'll go from there. That being the end of the agenda, there are some informational reports available for y'all. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
It's been moved by Ms. Selby, is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, please signify by standing up and leaving.
Is that a, an approved method of voting in the?
Yeah, Morrison or Hertz, you mean?
All right.
Robert says yeah.
Okay, so we don't use Robert's rule of order? We use a promissory procedure?
I heard about that.